1:01 PM and the first order of business is pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to entertain the prerogative of the chair to introduce our newly appointed and sworn in member of the Board of Education, Paula Haney. So let's welcome Paula to the Board.
I'm very happy to be here.
Great. You'll have to remember to talk close to the mic so that people can hear you who are watching.
You don't have to push buttons.
You don't have to push any buttons.
That's good. Moved up in the world.
Paula, for people who don't know, Paula is returning to the Board after an absence of a number of years, but reminded me and Dr. Youngberg that she had been on the Board for about 20 years, years ago. So this is a return to the Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're just waiting for, I need to get his chair in place.
Making an entrance.
Just got it in place.
Okay. So first order of business is public comment. And there's one person signed up. Moises Flores has signed up to speak under public comment. Welcome. Hi. Make sure you hold the mic so...
Hello. Moises Flores from Willamette. Sorry. Congratulations for the new people. To my cousin over here, Lisa. Thank you. And I'm here because I hear on the radio this morning that we're going like you guys were going to talk about start doing the search for the new superintendent of school. You know, you guys choose like, I don't know how many candidate, three, two, you know, I hope they had like a big meeting in the school to have these people, what are they going to do for the school or for the students or the opinion, you know, for this? We want to, I want to know. You know, I hope they do that. Three candidates, three, four candidate to have them there. And they get hired, what are they going to do for the school, you know, for the school, for the students, whatever. All right? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who didn't sign up who would like to speak during public comment? Okay. Yes, Mary.
Mary Galucci, a parent of a high school student and also a member of the Board of Ed. And I just wanted to bring this to the attention of my fellow Board members and the public. Connecticut is proposing legislation that would ban the use of Native American mascots in schools. Maine is the first state that did this banning, prohibiting in public colleges, universities, and schools, the use of Native American symbols as mascots. I would like to just read a summary of the law. A public school may not have or adopt a name, symbol, or image that depicts or refers to a Native American tribe, individual, custom, or tradition, and that is used as a mascot, nickname, logo, letterhead, or team name of a school. In signing this law, the governor, Janet Mills of Maine, said, "While Indian mascots were often originally chosen to recognize and honor a school's unique connection to Native American communities in Maine, we have heard clearly and unequivocally from Maine tribes that they are a source of pain and anguish." And I want to point out that that has been a discussion in the state of Connecticut as well. So I'm just using this as an example. It's relevant to the situation in the state, and it can be used for educational purposes. I would add that I'll be following the example of a sports writer from the New London Day who said, "As long as some schools still use these names," that he will be referring only to a town rather than the mascot when the two teams play. Often the students have, are conflicted, and in fact, in some towns, they have militated to change, but it hasn't occurred. So for example, Manchester changed a few years ago. They're currently called the Red Hawks. But if they still had their Native American mascot, I would just refer to them as, say, Manchester is playing the Whippets today. I just wanted to put this out as an educational suggestion for perhaps the high school students here have struggled to know how to respond to this controversy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak under public comment? Okay, hearing or seeing none. We're on to reports, the superintendent's reports. Hand it over to you, Dr. Youngberg.
Thank you very much. Okay, in your packet.
Mr. Minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Goodness for Janet Testa.
Oh, yeah. I am sorry. Thank you for keeping us on track, or me on track. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes from January 8th.
So moved.
Moved by Ilda. Your voice was louder. Seconded. Do I hear a second? Second by Katina. Is there any discussion? Are there any changes, corrections? Hearing, none. All those in favor of approving the, January 8th minutes?
I wish it was April.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention.
Two.
Two. Two. Oh, that's right. You weren't, you, yes, yes. Yeah, you were not here. So, okay, wonderful. Thank you. So next thing, we're back to item number five on the agenda.
So in your packet, you received our most up-to-date personnel report. I don't know if there's any questions.
Any questions on the personnel report? Okay.
Okay, the next item would be the first reading of the proposed school calendar for the 2021 school year. I don't know if you have questions.
Is there anything, is there anything you want to say about it?
So this is the work of the committee that Mr. Weathers actually led. The committee is comprised of members of each of our bargaining units. And they went through, they take a model that's given to us by our RESC, and then we build our calendar off of that model, taking feedback from all the various bargaining units and staff members who are part of the committee, and then they make a recommendation or two to move forward. And this is the draft that we're recommending be moved, be moved forward for 2021.
So there'll be no action on this today because it's the first reading. Are there any comments or questions, suggestions that the Board members would like to make? Okay, so we'll, we'll take it up for a second reading at our next meeting, and we can vote on it.
Sure.
So if anybody has any thoughts about it, please get in touch with the superintendent.
Absolutely.
Thanks. So moving along, are there any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, so we'll go, this is traditionally the workshop meeting. We don't really have to have reports from all the committees twice a month, but we do need to have a report from the Finance and Audit Committee twice a month because there's so much that's been going on. So I'm going to hand it over to you, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I missing the transfers?
In the weekly update?
I didn't see, I didn't see them.
Didn't we see them last week? But then again...
That was the committee meeting. So is there any way, can we pass over the transfers and have them look for, I mean, you probably want to report, you had a meeting last week. And we can, we can try to get the transfers here.
I do apologize.
Can somebody get them for us? And we can come back to them?
Do you have copies?
Okay. So Mark, are there other things I'm sure you want to talk about?
We had the meeting. We reviewed. There've been a lot of hard work on trying to backfill positions that were in 1819 so that we can make sense of 1920. There's a list of positions that have not been filled. They're in your packet. Hopefully, based on those lists of positions not filled, and when we find out exactly what happened with Berkman's Comp actual payments and our medical insurance actual payments, it looks like we will be able to balance the budget for this year without any significant staff cuts. We just not, but we will not be filling these positions, but we won't actually be cutting staff that are unexisted.
Filled positions, yeah.
And then we also discussed the budget book for next year. And again, because of the confusing nature of our budgets in the last couple of years, we won't be able to look at a two- or three-year comparison, but we'll look at what's budgeted this year versus what we're going to budget for next year. So the budget book will have some sort of historial, historical format so that we can see where we're, where we're at. Those were the major things that came out of the meeting.
Are there any questions about the, where we are rectifying the budget for this current budget year, which is the first thing that Mark talked about, and/or setting up for the budget discussions that are going to begin very soon about the next budget that we need to present to the Board of Finance by mid-March? Yes, Mary?
I wanted to say that, you know, I'm glad that we can try our hardest not to have any layoffs because that's a great concern. But I'm worried about some of the cuts or the, not, the positions not being filled, especially at the middle school. They seem to have taken a very, the brunt here, just looking at open positions that will not be filled, that we got in the packet.
There, I don't know if any school really took more or less of the brunt. It is true. If you can't fill positions, we're working from a deficit, right? The middle school wasn't properly staffed to begin with this year, so we did put positions back in based on their student enrollment. But there are some additional positions. I don't want to say we can live without because we don't ever want to do that, but we're going to have to for the rest of the school year. It's unfortunate, but I think Dr. Morales have come to a place where if we fill the positions that are open, that we have told him there's money to actually pay the people, he can get through, the school can get through the school year. So I'm really cognizant of what they need to operate on a day-to-day basis. And I am aware that they've had some significant transition, you know, growing pains that we're working on. So it's definitely on my radar. And they have, at this point, they have the largest administrative team in the district. So I'm hoping, and not that administrators can take the place of support staff and personnel in classrooms, but they can add an added sense of stability in the building. So, you know, that's, that's where we are with that.
Thank you.
I do want to say it is, I think that the current staff, not just central office, but the different staff in the different school buildings deserve a lot of credit for, and particularly Rita and the finance staff for figuring out a way with as little disruption as possible to try to close, to project out through the end of the year and figure out how we can close without being in the red. I do want to say, even though this is the picture that's being presented to us now and that Mark reported on, things could change between now and the end of the year. And so just because we are saying right now, things are okay, and we think we're going to get through without making any further impact on staffing in the buildings, we may need to take some drastic cuts. We don't know. You know, it, it could change between now and the end of the year if things don't work out the way that they're projected. So we're skating on like a thin line, thin, thin amount of ice here, trying to work within a zero MBR. And I think it's laudable that we've gotten this far through the year in the shape that we've gotten in. But I want us all to be vigilant about watching the bottom line here. And I, I commend the staff for working so hard to do that. I know it took a lot of work. And so I don't want to pig all the comments. Is there anything else that anybody wants to say? Yes, Mark?
I just want to go along with Mary's comment about the middle school. I wonder, one of the other pages that we have is a, is a classroom enrollment, but only it ends at grade five. Could this be extended to six, seven, and eight so we have some idea of what, what class sizes are being, you know, had at the middle school? Help us understand some of these cuts.
So we're going to get an update on class, on counts for the, for the schools that are non-elementary schools. Thank you. And anybody else want to comment on where we are with finances? I do want to say that Janet Testa informed me that she hadn't put the, we hadn't put the transfers on this budget because it's normally, on this agenda because it's normally a workshop meeting, but we could amend the agenda because it's not a special meeting to add action on the budget transfers if we would like, or we could hold and do it at the next meeting. What do you, what do you want to do, Mark?
Holding is fine with me. It's up to the administration. Do we need to have these approved? Do you need the transfers approved now, or can you wait two weeks?
Yes. So, so let's amend the agenda.
I make a motion to add the agenda under action items, approval of the budget transfers as presented by the Finance and Audit Committee.
Okay. Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Katina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to add the action on the transfers to the action items? Okay, unanimous.
Action item three. Nope, that's after.
It would be four, five.
Five, yes.
Yeah.
I looked at the one after executive session, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, just that. Anything else on the Finance and Audit Committee? Thank you, everybody. And now, sort of the bigger discussion item is, today is going to be the Wyndham High School. I just want to start by saying that we've been talking at the Board of Ed and with the superintendent about hearing from the different schools throughout the year so that we can spend a little bit more time at meetings, understanding what's going on in the different schools. And we're starting with the high school. And I'm going to hand it over to you to get, tee things up.
So one of the things that's really important to me is that the leadership team plays an active role in explaining to the Board what's happening in their schools and presenting the things that they're doing well and the things that they're working on and need to continue to focus on. So I've set up a schedule for them to start presenting to the Board so that you can really get a sense from the people that are on the front lines, what's happening in each of the schools. Pam Kavanaugh, our acting principal at Wyndham High School, is going to present this evening. One of the things I just want to point out, you have a copy of the presentation in case you can't see it on our screen, which is pretty far away. You have a copy of the presentation in front of you. You also have information about Camino Alto and about Wyndham Echo. What we decided was, after going through the presentation with Ms. Kavanaugh, that we would give you, because the Board has asked for information about both these programs, we would give you a snippet of information and do another formal presentation on another night about these programs. We thought that if we included these programs in tonight's presentation, it would take entirely too long. So I gave a little bit of information. We would, we would encourage you to go through the information and come up with questions. And then we're going to set up a formal presentation for those two programs, which are both housed at Wyndham High School. So for right now, I would like to introduce Acting Principal, Mrs. Pamela Kavanaugh.
Think you need to use the mic? Well, otherwise the people watching on YouTube won't hear you, so.
Testing. I'm so pleased on behalf of our students, faculty, staff, Dr. Morales and Mr. Rizley, to update you on how things are going at our high school. So who are we? As of October 1st, these are our demographics. Seventy-one percent of our students receive free and reduced lunch. Thirty-two percent are English learners. Twenty-six percent are special education students. And on October 1st, we had 633 students at Wyndham High School. So our leadership team, my two other comrades are celebrating our game of the week tonight. They're both working with the wrestling team. We have a big match downstairs in the gym this afternoon. Our school-wide data team members, Ms. Folen is here representing special education, but these are the members of our leadership team. Every Tuesday morning, we meet to talk about our priorities, our achievement, our attendance, our social and emotional learning, and our graduation rate. At Wyndham High School, we're focused on the competencies and the skills that our students need to graduate. And the graphic here shows us that not only do we want to prepare our students with content knowledge, but other skills like communication, problem-solving, and critical thinking, knowing how to use technology and to conduct research, being creative, innovative, and adaptive to change, along with civic responsibility and social awareness. These are the skills and competencies that we look for in our graduates. So our students begin high school on freshman teams. We have two small freshman teams at the high school, and their focus areas are improving student achievement by making the transition from the middle school or Barrows to the high school a smooth one, personalizing education on two small teams, making interdisciplinary connections between the content areas, and setting a culture of high expectations at the high school. As you know, the state of Connecticut has adopted a new 25-credit graduation requirements for the class of 2023. These requirements include nine credits in the humanities, nine credits in science, technology, engineering, and math, a credit in physical fitness and wellness, a credit in health and safety education, and a credit in the world languages, along with a mastery-based diploma assessment. So what does that mean to us at the high school in terms of new things? One, one credit in world language for all students is something new. So we'll be focusing on that. Adding and developing additional technology courses and an additional credit in health and safety education. So with our current freshmen, we've been focusing on developing pathways where our students will learn specialties or endorsements before they graduate. Most of the students in our class of 2023, our current freshmen, are in an exploratory class where they're doing interests inventories, personality inventories, and learning about different fields so that they can choose a pathway. We have three pathways that were chosen based on student surveys over the past couple of years. So we have business, engineering, and technology, health sciences, human services, law, and public safety. So we're a comprehensive high school, but within that, within our comprehensive high school, students can graduate with concentration or specialties, just like you might in college, where you might have a comprehensive college, but you graduate with a biology major or a sociology major like that. So our career pathways will offer our students coursework that's real aligned to national industry standards, opportunities to earn college credit in our high school, opportunities to earn credentials, industry credentials, and learning employability skills along with work-based learning experiences. So here are some sample courses. If you're a student looking to go into a pathway and you choose business, engineering, and technology, you might, and these are courses that we have right now at the high school, you might choose to take graphic design, a QV course, a QVCC course called business software applications. You could take an ECE course from UConn in micro or macroeconomics. And if you're in the Echo program, you would take manufacturing math, blueprint reading, manufacturing machinery. Those are all QVCC courses. In the health sciences, Dr. Gaiosa is in the process of getting certified to teach ECE medical terminology next year. We currently offer anatomy physiology and ECE biotechnology, which is a UConn course. And then many of our students expressed interest in human services, law, and public safety. And these are some of the courses that they could take if they chose that pathway. So currently at Wyndham High School, we offer our students many rigorous and college-level courses. Students can take several courses that they earn QVCC credit, many courses that they can earn ECE credit through UConn, and they can also earn college credit through taking AP courses and taking an AP test. So currently, we have 130 sticks of our students enrolled in these college-level classes. So this is the busy time of year for our seniors. Many of them have already applied for college. Some of the students are still applying to colleges, especially two-year colleges or colleges that take rolling admissions right now. But these are many of the colleges that our students have applied to. And we are starting to, our acceptances are starting to roll in. It's very early, but several of our students have been accepted to college. And 24% of our seniors have applied to four-year colleges and universities using the Common App. So one of our priority areas at Wyndham High School is achievement on the SAT. Since 2015, the improvement that we've had in English and in mathematics is second among all the Alliance districts. Right now, we have school-wide focus areas, which means all of our students, all of our teachers, no matter if it's science, English, math, art, all of our students, all of our teachers across the board are focused in on these SAT skills, words in context, command of evidence, problem-solving, and data analysis. Our teachers and students are using several resources, Khan Academy, a new resource that the Commissioners Network is funding. It's called NoRed Inc., and it's a program that students use, a computerized program that develops editing and revising skills for the SAT. Another program that the Commissioners Network funding, is funding is Gizmos. Gizmos is a series of science simulations that are based on the NGSS standards, which also support achievement on the SAT. Our students are using the SAT Daily Practice app that they can even download on their phones. And our juniors are enrolled in eligibility for college board scholarships. So we use several methods of monitoring our student progress, the Mini SAT. We have social science benchmark and NGSS interim assessments as well. We're very excited that beginning the week after exams, we'll be offering our students SAT preparation in a bunch of different ways based on their feedback from last year. One way they'll receive preparation is after school with our own ELA and mathematics teachers. And another way is that we'll be offering Kaplan for students who can be committed to going every Tuesday and Thursday after school. They'll be able to do a Kaplan program. And they'll run from February 4th to March 24th because March 25th is School Day SAT. At our school, we have a growing population of SLIF. SLIF are students who have limited or interrupted formal education. These students might come from other countries. They might arrive here without having... They might arrive here without having gone to school all of their lifetimes. So at Wyndham High School, we have 198 English learners, 102 of them are new arrivals, but we have 50 SLIF students. Thirty of them have entered Wyndham High School at ages 16 or 17. So we're concentrated at our school right now. We're thinking about programming because these students still need to meet the 25-credit graduation requirement. Another priority at our school is addressing social and emotional learning, and this is the year that we're rolling out the Ruler program with our students. Last year, our faculty focused in on learning about Ruler. Ruler is, comes from the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence, and it's all about R for recognizing, U for understanding, L for labeling, E for expressing, and R for regulating emotions. So during their advisory period, students learn some of these skills, but Ruler is an approach that we use throughout the building, throughout the school day, and it's all about checking in with students. How are you feeling? And students have learned to identify their feelings in different ways, like if you're feeling calm, if you're feeling confident, if you're feeling pleasant, you might say that you're in the green. If you're feeling super excited, you're at the pep rally, you're all charged up, you might be identified that you're feeling in the yellow. So teachers are using this approach, checking in with students. Sometimes you could even use the mood meter to maybe have your, you know, use it even in lesson planning. If you're getting your kids ready to have a debate, you might want to do an activity that makes them be in the red, where you're feeling really passionate, you're feeling strong about something, you're ready, revved up for an, you know, to support your arguments. Another focus at our school is student attendance. This year, every teacher has an attendance mentee, which means that they have a student that they already have a relationship with. It might be somebody that they have in their class, someone that they coach, and they check in with a student who might not come to school as often as they should. They check in with their student regularly. They might celebrate their birthday together. And every Friday, our teachers fill out an attendance mentor form to inform our attendance committee about things that they've talked about with their mentees, and the attendance committee has learned a lot of information about how we can better serve our students. We have a partnership with ECSU where students come on every Monday. They'll be resuming on February 3rd, I think is the Monday. They're back from vacation, will be done with exams. They come in every Monday and work with about 10 of our students who have, might be chronically absent, and they have lunch together, they set goals together, they've gone across the street to Eastern for tours, and that's another way that we're focusing on attendance. These students in the picture have been recognized for the attendance. We've sent postcards home to students who have had perfect attendance. And the day that we came back from our winter vacation, we had an awesome attendance carnival. I don't know if you've heard about it, but the National Guard brought this huge inflatable with bungee cords, and students ran, and we had donut eating contests, we had popcorn, and the whole idea was to celebrate student attendance and stress the importance of coming back to school the day after vacation, that every day is important at Wyndham High School. We also have attendance contracts for students who are slipping with their attendance, where they sign contracts and to limit the number of absences that they have. Club sports and activities are really important to us. This year, we've really focused on developing pride in our school, developing an identity in our school, celebrating with things like the game of the week, which is happening tonight down in our gym, the wrestling match is our game of the week. Throughout the, every sport has been recognized for a game of the week. We're stressing all, for our students to join a club or a sport. We have the Right Idea Tutors, we have the Chess Club, we have the Book Club, we have the Gender Spectrum Alliance. We want all of our students to be, you know, think of school as not from 7:30 to 2:35, but beyond those hours. So our staff are always involved in lifelong learning and professional learning. Three times a week, our data teams meet to look at student work and collaboratively plan lessons with, within members of their department or within cross-disciplinary teams, planning based on student data. Our teachers are also involved in the UConn Teacher Leadership Program and the Equity Fellows, and something that we've started this year is once a month, our teachers go into their colleagues' classrooms to learn best practices throughout the building. Our teachers have also this year learned about the GLAD strategies, which are about language acquisition. So one of our partners is the Commissioners Network. The Commissioners Network comes to our school and visits twice a month. They'll be conducting a mid-year audit of our school like they did last year on February 20th. But these are some of the things that Ms. Iris White, who's our state consultant, has noticed this year through her school walkthroughs, through our classroom walkthroughs, and these are things that she has already put in writing about the progress that's shown at Wyndham High School. And some of these things have to do with instruction, where there's an increasing percentage of students engaged in peer-to-peer discourse and engaged in the content activities. There's increased monitoring for student understanding and meeting the objectives, and Ms. White always says that she's so pleased about how open our teachers are to trying new strategies. In terms of climate and culture, we've been recognized for the strong relationships, I'm sure you know, between our teachers and our students, and also that we've been fostering our school identity through branding and just consistency, consistent messaging throughout our building. These are our partners. We partner with UConn, we partner with Electric Boat through the Echo program. We're excited to partner with UConn through the Joy program. We have students going up to Jorgensen Theater tomorrow night to see a program, and throughout the year, we've been receiving tickets up to UConn through the Joy program. The Goodspeed Opera House, we have two field trips this year there. And then, of course, our students are involved in the community, with the community through their capstone projects. On March 2nd, our NIAS five-year progress report is due, so we have a list of standards that we addressed five years ago when NIAS came, and that we're preparing a report just to update them on the progress towards those standards. So looking forward, I talked about the pathways. So this year, we implemented the exploratory class for our freshmen. The freshmen are choosing pathways and choosing courses that they'll be able to take to earn concentration areas. But moving forward, we're looking to come up with industry-recognized credentials, certificates that students can earn in different categories, possibly CNA, EMT, software repair, things like that, and also to develop, to develop work-based learning experience, whether it's cooperative experience with the community, or whether it's school-based enterprises, perhaps like school banking. So this is what's happening at Wyndham High School. We're really proud of our school, and I'm saying that on behalf of all of our students, teachers, and staff. Does anybody have any questions?
Go ahead, Mary.
I just had a question when I, you were talking about this wonderful opportunity you offer to the students about the SAT prep that they don't need to pay for, and I think that's great. I wondered about the winter athletes. Will they be able to work around that in order to take advantage of it? Because I know there's practices on, in the afternoons after school as well as this prep.
Right, so that's why we're offering two ways for our students to go to SAT prep. We learned last year that we have athletes that want to make sure they go to all of their practices. So one, one way that they can attend SAT prep is just working with our own teachers after school, which was really successful last year when we did that. Our math scores increased several percentage points. So those teachers are going to be available every Tuesday and Thursday after school, and that's on a, you know, come when you can kind of basis for the students. The Kaplan program, students have to make more of a commitment to that program because it's progressive.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, Katina?
I have two quick questions on the strategic priority for staff learning. What are Equity Fellows, if you can explain that?
Equity Fellows is a group of teachers who meet once a month after school. There are teachers from all over the district to address equity concerns in the schools. They develop an equity project. So for instance, last year for our SLIF, our students with limited or interrupted formal education, one of our Equity Fellows was Tatiana Gomez, and she developed a SLIF summer program where our students could really prepare for the next school year, and she learned about, you know, the skills and things like that in that Equity group.
And my second question was actually about SLIF. Am I understanding correctly, you have 198 English learners at Wyndham High School. Of those, then 102 are new arrivals? Did I understand that correctly?
And of the 102 are new arrivals, we have 50 SLIF.
And from those, 30 of them entered at age 60. Did I follow that? Okay, thank you.
So I thought that was important information for the board to know because that is, you know, a significant number of our students, and we really need to, you know, support them in our programming.
Thank you for the way.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Ilda, and then Paula?
I just, I just want to say that I am a proud parent of a Whipit student who's soon to graduate from this awesome school, and I want to give you guys credit, and I want to give you a big round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's done amazing. So proud.
Good mothering, too. Right.
That's a big part, right?
Paula?
You had mentioned with the SLIF students that even though we have students that are 16 and 17 years old, that seems to require a lot of work if they're still going to have to graduate with those same graduation requirements. Is that in the works? I can't even imagine.
Bless you.
Right, so that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. We did talk to, when the Commissioners Network was here last week, we talked to Megan Alubiki Flick, who is the English learner consultant for the state of Connecticut, and we talked about just the need across the whole state of Connecticut to develop programming and ways for these students to be able to meet those graduation requirements and, you know, trying to start thinking outside the box of how we can help them do that. Yeah, it is. It's going to be a challenge.
Katina?
And one of the creative ways that we can help them is credit for life, like we use in college. Have them write essays or portfolios that show what they have done, because many have worked in farms and know about agriculture or in factories and have had life experiences that could be given credit for.
That's exactly what we talked to the State Department about.
Will the state allow you to do that at the, at the, under?
So that's a State Department of Education decision, but we did really talk about our need here at the high school.
Are there models where that has been done in other communities?
In other states, yes.
In other states? Okay.
Not in other communities in Connecticut.
Okay. Interesting, because I think it's a little different. The colleges have a little more latitude, I think, to do some things. Yeah. Jaime?
Yes, just curious about the new arrivals. Where do they come from? There's 102, right?
We have new arrivals from Puerto Rico, Mexico, Guatemala, you know, they're coming from other countries. Yep, Puerto Rico.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Comments? I want to thank you for putting that presentation together, and I hope, I hope this, if we're going to be hearing from the different schools, it'd be nice if the presentations were posted somewhere so that members of the public who wanted to check them out could do that.
Oh, that's a great idea. We'll make sure we put it on our website.
I see Margaret over here nodding her head, so we'll, we'll figure that out. That would be good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. They can come here. See you live.
I just want to make a quick announcement. There's a flyer that has been handed out to everybody on the board about the Wyndham Public School District Student, I mean, School Governance Council joint meeting this coming Monday evening at 5:15 PM at Wyndham Center School, and all members of the Board of Education, the Town Council, the Board of Finance, and I'm assuming members of the public who want to show up are invited to attend. I've heard, I shared this with you all a little while ago, I've heard from several of you that you plan on attending, but if you haven't told me that you're attending and you want to tell Kim Swart over here before the evening is over, please do. I think it'll be an important way to start out the year, and as we're going into the budget setting process, I really encourage people to think of ways, programs, I mean, events like this and other events can be used to begin more dialogue between the community and the school system and elected officials in town. So thank you, thank you for organizing this. So we have, next we have action items, and at the last meeting, we talked about a proposal to make an adjustment to the current school calendar. At that time, board members didn't feel ready to take action on that. So I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent to just remind us what we talked about at the last meeting. We also have a new member, so it would be good for her to know, too, so.
So at the last meeting, we talked about the fact that we had already logged four snow days or inclement weather days, which was moving back the last day of school for us, and of course, since we made this, since I made this recommendation, we haven't had a single snow day, which is interesting. But we were looking, right, I know, knock on wood. We were looking at potentially changing one of our professional development days on March 6th back to a regular school day, which would give us another day in the calendar where students would attend and, and put us in a position where we might not have to dig into our spring vacation, because the way our calendar is set up, for those of you who are new, if we have more than five snow days before, where's the date? March 6th, we have to start taking days away from our spring calendar, our spring vacation, which makes teachers very sad, kids still. So we're looking at potentially changing that day back from professional development to a school day and then giving us two more snow days before we start deducting days from spring vacation, but it's a bad decision, so, you know, it's completely up to you.
Questions, comments? Paula?
Does that affect any contract issues with professional development days?
It doesn't actually. We have more professional development days than any of the surrounding towns, so we have a few extra, extra days to play with, so it doesn't, it doesn't impact PD days at all.
Katina?
I was going to make a motion.
Oh, yes, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the change to district calendar for school year 2019 to 2020 as described by Dr. Youngberg.
So motion's been put on the table by Katina. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Tracy. So continue the discussion. Yes, go ahead, Jaime.
Are you recommending this action?
I am actually. I'm recommending that we make the adjustment because it gives us I'm recommending that we make the adjustment because it gives us days back should we have more bad weather between now and June, well, between now and the completion of winter. We still have a lot of weeks to go.
At the last meeting, we did talk in more detail, Jaime, about the fact that already the June calendar is pretty far into June, and when you have summer school and things like that, you really do need some time between, you know, because some people might say, well, who cares if they go to the very end of June or something? But we do need time to clear out and to give people a little breathing room before we start the summer session, correct?
When does summer school start?
July 6th.
Thank you.
Part of the calendar.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Paula?
Just one question on the Calendar Committee. I know this didn't actually go to the Calendar Committee, but are there students on that committee?
On the, oh, on the, the school year Calendar Committee that gave the draft for tonight? There aren't, but that's a really good point.
Really is.
That's interesting. I love it.
We did that for a few years.
We could maybe remedy that.
Yeah.
For future calendar discussions, yes.
I actually.
But for the purposes of this, this calendar was presented and approved last year, so. Yes, were you going to say something else?
Just that I really want to see the high school students back on, involved in the board process, so that just goes hand in hand with what I'm hoping to get started again.
Yeah, I agree.
I see a bunch of nodding heads. This idea was brought up to me in the past week about figuring out a way to engage high school students at the board level again. And so, we're going to do a little research on sort of what practices have been in the past and how, you know, any pluses and minuses.
So, tomorrow.
Why don't you stand up and speak in the mic, please? So, the high school principal, Pam Kavanaugh, has a response on that or something to weigh in on?
Oh, I was just going to tell you that tomorrow during the advisory period, our senior class is having a meeting, so we are going to talk about this with the seniors and see if any students might be interested in, you know, serving on the board with you.
Because there's actually a policy that says it should be happening, and it's just not, so.
There was a policy back from 2009, I think.
So, those of you, those of us who haven't been on the board as long may not know when that was, you know, discontinued and whatever, so we should talk about, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, great.
At a future meeting, okay? Does that make sense, folks?
I think the problem was, was that the students that volunteered to be on the board and had something to say were the ones who also do sports and take the most rigorous academic classes, and they would often ask about halfway through the bidding, you guys probably remember this, to be excused because they had just gotten out of practice or game or meet or something like that, and they still had to go home and do all of their homework and, you know, the other obligations that they had. And sometimes they didn't have a lot to contribute, and sometimes they did have a lot to contribute, but they were trying to stack more and more on top of themselves, and this was something that they could ask to be excused from at some point. So, that was where we were running into a problem. They weren't showing up regularly. I don't think it was an intentional, you know, absence of not having students on the board, but I think it just gets to be too much, especially like around midterms and finals, and usually pick seniors, and they have senior activities and college visits and all those things, so it became a little bit onerous. Thank you.
So, back to the question at hand, is there anything more that people would like to say about the calendar, suggested calendar adjustment?
Do we have to approve if we take the days from vacation? It's already built into the way the calendar's written, so I don't believe so, no. Just asking.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion that's on the table?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Now, we have approval of submission of a grant from Steelcase, and is there somebody who would like to speak to this?
Sure, I can.
Okay. Well, first we need a motion on the table.
Make the motion to approve the grant application.
I second.
A motion made by Tracy, seconded by Ilda. Okay.
So, this is a grant that Mrs. Darrell Belling has asked to submit. It would give us an opportunity to get up to $132,000 from the Steelcase Active Learning Company. They essentially balled different furniture options for classrooms or offices, and they would like the opportunity to give a classroom this furniture, and in exchange, have our students rate their experience using this furniture for their big research study. I, we verify that it will not require us to spend a penny more than the grant offers us because we simply can't, so just looking forward opportantly for her to submit the grant. We don't know if we'll even get it, but want permission to submit.
Any discussion on this?
How many classrooms? I'm sorry.
Yeah, go.
Mary raised her hand.
Okay, Mary, go ahead.
How many classrooms would this?
So, the way it's written, it looks like it's, they outfit one whole classroom, but I don't know if we'll have flexibility to make it more than one. It's up to $132,000, so I don't know how they break that out or, you know, what the award will be, but.
I know, we're in desperate need of new furniture. Custodians and my husband and my son have, you know, come in and with drills and stuff like that and tried to fix things because things are falling apart. Do we get to keep the furniture afterwards?
Yes, it becomes ours, yeah. In exchange for the research, you know, get the kids to tell how they feel about using the furniture.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mary?
I just wondered, I guess it could be used in the new high school as well, so.
Sure.
Any further, Jaime?
Information from CVA and the other researchers about the grant itself.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question, please?
Yes, go right ahead.
Will students have the opportunity to opt out if they don't want to be a part of this study?
That's always the case, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, we have two items on the agenda now coming up for action that deal with food services. And I do see that Eric is here. Would you like to come up to the table and address these?
Absolutely.
Yes, I need a motion on the floor first for the acceptance of a bid for a food services truck.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina. Do you want to second it, Ilda? Okay. Okay, so we'll address that one first. So, do you want to speak to this?
Sure.
You want to use the microphone, please? Thanks. And identify yourself for the people watching.
Good evening, Eric Ball, Director of Food Service. So, the RFP that went out for the food service truck was basically a need that I was trying to fill for the last couple of years. This truck will be a multipurpose vehicle. It'll be a refrigerating box for licking, so it allows us to do many things. The most important thing is to pick up and deliver fresh farm products, produce, I should say, to our school. So, it'll be a farm-to-school produce delivery vehicle, number one.
Thank you.
And foremost, second to that, we'll also use that truck to deliver equipment and product from school to school. We do a lot of inter-school deliveries of product, but once we may run out of something that another school may have a surplus of, so we do that on a weekly basis using a courier and a courier's sack. They'll pick that product out for us twice a week. The only benefit of the vehicle, excuse me, would be for catering. So, we had a catering business within the program, which 90% of that catering happens for district staff, employees, and students. We do a little bit of outside catering, but this will allow us to be mobile because currently we don't have equipment that's capable of keeping things at the proper temperature when we transport from one area to the next. And the Health Department will be pleased to know that we now have that capability. Lastly, this will be a food recovery vehicle. Last summer, we had an issue over at Barrows where we had a walk-in box that went down. It was non-reparable. It was on a weekend, so we could not get the parts delivered on that site until three days later. So, myself and a few members of the Maintenance Department had to go out and evacuate that entire freezer and all of its contents. We did lose some product, but we were able to save some. We had several vehicles, maintenance trucks, and a food service van that helped bring that product to another school. So, with this vehicle, we'll be able to park it onsite remotely, plug it in, won't even have to stay running onsite, but we can plug in through a 110 outlet for as long as we need to safely recover any food for potential losses.
That's good.
So, if there's any questions related to the truck, I'd be happy to answer any.
Any questions? Yes, Katina?
When you say farm to school, do you mean local farms in our area?
So, we are working with procuring local produce within a set geographic area, so when I say local, that could be determined by 5, 10, 15, or even 20 miles. Depending on what produce we're looking for, yes, we're reaching out to a network of farmers, and we're doing that through a Yukon Extension and then local on your trade program, which we've been working on and with for several years now. So, now we'll be able to expand on that just a little bit more.
Thank you.
They don't offer delivery services.
I'd like to clarify the funding source for this.
That would be my question.
Yes.
So, the funding source comes from the food service nonprofit revenue account that's that can only be used by food services, so it will not impact the general fund at all.
So, we're recycling the proceeds from that, from that account back into capital investment?
That's the expectation from the use.
I just want to be clear for the people watching this that we're not, like, using other monies that are taking away from any other programs and things of that sort. Lisa, and then Ilda.
And then, I'm assuming that if it runs, you could run it on gas, too, so under emergency purposes, if you can't plug it in, you can run it on gas.
Absolutely. It is a gas-driven vehicle in standby for the generator that powers the reefer unit can run on electricity or from the generator off of the vehicle itself. Fair enough, yes.
Ilda?
Well, two questions. One is, do you have pictures of what the inside looks like? Is it like a deep freezer, refrigerator kind of thing?
So, it's essentially a 12-foot cube with insulation. I do have, let's see if I have, this is what the truck itself looks like.
Oh, wow.
There may be a photo of the inside of the box. I can't say for sure, but it's a standard box. It's not custom-made. They're readily available on the open market.
Any other questions? Paula, and then Mark?
Not so much a question as a comment. You got me on temperature control.
I know.
That is essential. And the catering, does that come out of the food service department, or is that still being done here at the high school at all?
So, all of the catering is internal through my department as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I'm curious about the ongoing insurance, maintenance, upkeep. Who's going to drive this truck, especially with the insurance aspect of it, and what employee are we allocating all of this time to drive the truck?
So, to drive any of the vehicles here in the district, you must be a board-approved driver with a complete background check that happens on an annual basis. I currently have three drivers listed in my department. Any one of us will be able to drive the vehicle. The insurance is covered by the town. That's one expense that doesn't come from my department, and that's just the way the system has been built. As far as gas, maintenance, and upkeep will be completely covered by food services.
So, it'll be on the town's insurance, or the school board's insurance policy, but the upkeep and maintenance is coming out of the food service?
100%.
Good question.
It's a win-win. Good question, yeah.
Any further questions? Yes, Lisa?
But the Board of Education, I mean, Wyndham Public Schools would be owning the vehicle.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion on the floor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Then we have acceptance of a bid for Wyndham High School tilting kettle. Would you like to explain for people watching this what a tilting kettle is?
Yeah, thank you.
I need a motion. A motion by Tracy.
Second.
Seconded by Katina.
So, this one is a double-jacket steam kettle, which we could not operate without. In this case, we have two 40-gallon kettles. We have them in all of our sites. This one here, we're going to have to table until the next board meeting because the RFP closes on Monday.
Okay.
We did want to bring it to your attention in advance, but we will not be able to have a vote on this until I close out the RFP on Monday with the committee.
Okay, we're going to defer action on this until our next meeting, perhaps.
Can I ask a question?
I'd like to answer a question regarding the equipment.
What is it?
Okay, quickly, what is a tilting kettle? And then, and then we're going to stop it at that, okay? Just what is a tilting kettle?
We're curious.
It's a stop spot about 4 feet around its circumference, and it's operated by either gas or electricity. High-pressure steam enters the double walls, and it pressurizes and goes around. It's good for even cooking. There's no hot spots. So, we use it to boil water, cook vegetables, saute, just about anything.
No, it tilts to empty. It tilts to empty.
So, the tilt part is to, your product is finished, you can tilt it to either remove the water or the liquid and remove the product that's inside. It just makes it easier on the back, so you're not, it's pretty deep. So, we can take a tour and go look at some.
Well, thank you very much, and we'll see you when we're ready to take action on that item. Thanks.
Bring the kettle.
We have one other item on action items before we move on, and that is action on the proposed budget transfers. And Mark, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion. We approve the budget transfers. There was $17,000 from advertising to other professional services and 550 from in-service to other professional tech services.
So, do I get a second on that?
Second.
Seconded by Tracy. Okay. This was discussed last week at the Finance and Audit Committee. Do, does anybody want to give an explanation of why we need to do these transfers?
Oh, the first one, sorry.
Rita, thank you. If you can get the mic up.
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. The, the first one, 550. The first one for 17,000 is to purchase a frontline program that's going to make efficiencies in the HR department.
Okay, and the second one?
The second one is for the district music department, PD. We wanted to.
Professional development for the music department, which was left out of other professional development activities, so we really need to do something about that.
Add that to the list, Dr. Youngberg.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion on the floor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Before we go to public comment, I'd like to, before we go to public comment, which will be followed by executive, proposed for executive session, I would like to have us entertain a motion for a change to the agenda under proposed for executive session to amend the agenda as a new business item. And the new item would be in place of the, the item number one and number two here, which is discussion concerning an attorney-client communication related to the search for a superintendent of schools and IRS reporting requirements under the Affordable Care Act.
So moved.
A motion made by Mary. I would like a second. Seconded by Tracy. Any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of amending the agenda as, under this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it was unanimous. I'm not sure. Was, can you put your hands up again, just so I know who? Yes, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so we will go to public comment before we go into executive session. Anybody want to speak under public comment? Yes, Tracy?
Okay, I figured out how to use it. Tracy Lambert, parent of a Wyndham High School senior. Tomorrow night at Mo's here in Willimantic, the senior class is having a fundraiser. 20% of the proceeds go to the Wyndham class, senior class, which is trying to pay for prom, yearbook, caps and gowns, senior outing, all those kind of things. I have coupons here if anybody would like them, or you can swing by the high school, or tomorrow, usually at Mo's, they have a pile, so if you're going to eat tomorrow night and you're in the area, we would appreciate your support.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Yes, Katina? My gosh, all these board members speaking.
I'll bring it over after.
Nope, is the light on? There you go. Push it up.
Katina started it.
Very involving everything. So, I want to congratulate Wyndham Public School for the, and especially the parent liaisons. So I want to congratulate Wyndham Public School for the, and especially the parent liaisons, I can never pronounce that in English, for the Three Kings Day activity. It was fabulous. It was multicultural. I mean, there were all, all kinds of kids and parents there, over 600 attended, right? The food was delicious, the kids behaved beautifully, three teachers dressed like three kings. It was phenomenal. So congratulations for the planning and execution of such a beautiful, beautiful community activity.
Anybody else during public comment? Okay, I want to be clear, before we go into executive session, we are not going to be taking up discussion concerning the finance director's employment contract, so if anybody's hanging around with bated breath to know about that, that is not being taken up. The agenda is going to talk about the superintendent's search and the IRS reporting requirements under the Affordable Care Act. Okay?
So I make a motion to go into executive session for what Lynn said, the amended, I don't have it textual in front of me, so for the amended reasons to go into executive session.
Okay, do I get a second?
Second.
Second by Katina. All those in favor of going into executive session? Okay.
Aye.
Unanimous.